The reason for delaying a decision would be if we felt the EIR was not adequate, and I don't think that's the case. So as far as I'm concerned, why would we delay it in view of the fact that approving the EIR does not affect any other decisions that the council might make regarding the library?
Did you have something to add?
No.
Go ahead.
I have a couple of letters that people might want to read.
Go ahead, I'd love to hear them.
Yeah, there is.
Okay, so any other questions from the council at this point in time before we officially go to public comments that are pre-announced? Okay, public comments about the EIR specifically, item number one.
Can I just follow up from the point of view of us out here because there's been a lot of clarifications about the purpose of approving the EIR and we just had a little presentation and I have a couple of questions about the consultants who did this and I have a couple of questions about the process.
May the speaker identify themselves, please.
Valerie Gardner, 18 McCormick Lane.
Thank you.
Bill, you described the purpose of the approval for the EIR by the council today, but in lieu of that clarification, that is not approving a particular project, can you also clarify on, for the residents who are here, what their rights are vis-a-vis their statements today and their rights to contest the EIR?
Well, as the EIR consultants pointed out, the legal framework for an EIR is incredibly broad, incredibly vague, and is intentionally supposed to not approach perfect. You know, for instance, if somebody said, "How many cars the traffic engineer estimates," and they say, "Four hundred and seven cars during peak hour," and somebody gets up and says, "Ah, no, I disagree with that, it's four hundred and eight," does that mean we need to go back and re-study, reissue, rethink? And the answer is clearly no. In fact, if you believe it to be five hundred meters, seven hundred meters, two thousand and eight, it's almost irrelevant unless you can make a good faith argument that something in the EIR is in fact incorrect or wasn't studied and was raised at an appropriate time during the process.
Okay, so this is the appropriate time to raise the objections that once they're on the record, they can be used as a basis to contest this in a lawsuit. So in other words, for people to make a statement that has, gives them the ability to later sue because they think that this process was not done right, they have to make that statement now, is that correct?
Well, yes and no. If the state, it gets more confusing than that because remember this process was a long and arduous process and it started off with a draft EIR and the public's ability to make comments about the draft EIR.
I know, but this point now, where we are now...
If those comments were not made at that time, you cannot now make a comment about the draft EIR being inadequate, not studying something. That ship sailed, essentially. Now, what you can comment on is after the comments were made and after the consultants went back and took the comments and made responses, if those responses were inadequate or failed to address something, or if the comment was made that was not responded to at all, then that's the basis for litigation under SEQA. But now, for the first time today, somebody raises an environmental issue, it's just too late. That is not, is not appropriate and it's not something that we can look at and say, gee, you know, good idea, let's go ahead and sue on it. At least that's my understanding and I'll defer to the consultants, but I'm pretty sure that at this point in time, the question that the city, it's been front of the city council, is was the process adequate? You know, was I barred from making my comments at an appropriate time? Did I, was I, were my comments not listened to and did they not address them appropriately according to SEQA?
Okay, I think I understood that, thank you. I have another question for the LSA consultants and just with respect to your experience of conducting your work, I really would like it if you could have a chance to explain to us what the process, when the process started, like when did you first connect with this group on this project? What was your timeline, not the November timeframe, but the start point? What was your process? Who did you connect with? Who did you talk with? And how did you interact with the council members and the committee? If you could just speak to that, I would appreciate it.
But how about your last question?
Yes.
Do you want the consultants to respond to that?
Lisa, would you like to comment?
We've responded to a request for proposals, I believe, back in April of 2011, and the request for proposals was issued by the town of Atherton and was looking for an environmental consultant to assist the town in the site selection process and environmental review for a library project. We take our direction from staff. We've worked with the library steering committee to the extent necessary to obtain information about the project, and also we've worked very early on in the process with Group Four Architecture to obtain architectural drawings and things that we needed for the purpose of the project description, and that's been our, the extent of our interaction with the council on the project.
Thank you. Any other public comments with regards to the EIR? Peter, you'll be next. Somebody else is already walking.
John Worthing, 98 Weepin', Atherton Avenue. I'm opposed to be certifying the EIR at this time, I think you should do it after the election. The reason for that is it will appear by certifying it that you are therefore approving the deconstruction of the library, and I think that's going to be misleading to the average voter who hasn't been involved in this entire process, and there's a lot of them out there. And I think we need to present to them a clear and accurate picture of what's going on, so I think it should be certified post-election.
Any other public comments?
Peter Urban, Large Drive. With, I spent, as some of you know, four and a half years as a planning commissioner in Palo Alto, so I've got a little more insight into some of these issues than I would otherwise have, but I'd like to thank Mr. Connors and the consultants for describing where we are. I think the confusion arises from, what we have here is what I would describe as a program EIR. It's not a building-specific EIR. We do not have a set of plans for which an EIR is being done. And as a consequence, what you asked the consultants to do was to look at a number of sites, look at the environmental implications of each, and tell you what those environmental implications are. There's nothing in the EIR which says, "Use this site or use that site or build this building or build that building." I would urge you to certify it today, and then there will be opportunities to come back when both the voters have decided where the building is going to be and you have a specific design for people to talk about those issues and see whether or not you have met the criteria that were established by the EIR. For example, the EIR says, in certain instances, mitigations can't be done. Well, that then becomes a factual statement, and are you prepared to move ahead with a building which you can't mitigate certain circumstances for? And that is then a decision which the council can make at that time. So I think the confusion comes because we have here really a program EIR which looks at a number of different sites, doesn't recommend one over the other, just talks about the pros and cons of each, and as Bill Connors has said, the question is, was that analysis complete? And it doesn't conclude by saying, "This is what you should do." That comes back to you and to the citizens to decide as we move forward. So I would urge you to certify today and get on with it.
Should I ask Peter a question? Peter? Peter, may I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Are you assuming there'll be a project EIR?
I don't think there has to be a project-specific EIR, but there will certainly be an action item before this council when it comes to approving a particular building project. And that will be done, and Mr. Connors can correct me on this, under the umbrella of the CIR, and then you will have to apply the information that's been provided in the CIR to assist you in making that decision.
Mr. Mayor, actually, I thought about explaining what a programmatic EIR was initially and thought wiser of it. It is somewhat confusing, but the biggest purpose of a program EIR is to avoid multiple EIRs. So the answer is very clearly, it embodies and encompasses a program, what would be a project as much as possible, but looks at a larger scope in terms of geographically. For instance, in this case, it may well be that there's three or four appropriate sites, and therefore it's more like we're talking about a program. You know, are we going to build a library somewhere? And if where are any of these sites acceptable? As opposed to, we're talking about building a program, a library, at a specific spot. And that's why this is kind of a crossover between the two, but it will only require one EIR ultimately, whenever you certify or don't certify it.
I could buy into that, Bill, but didn't have the reference in there, preferred site.
That's required by SEQA, it's kind of like it also has to have the no project site.
It wasn't required to be in the EIR, it was a council decision, three to decision, to make the part preferred site. And so when you say, oh, everything's being looked at equally, I beg to differ. I think the phrase in there, "This site is a preferred site," is leading to one site over the other.
Yeah, I don't think that in terms of the EIR, there's a quote preferred site, I apologize. What it says is there's an environmentally preferred site, and that means that when they look at the four or five sites, one of them is perhaps slightly better than the others. I didn't see that any were not acceptable sites, and therefore, you know, one has some meaning environmentally over the others, but again, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not supposed to beg the question as to whether any of the alternate sites would be appropriate as well.
Any other public comments?
Walter Sleet, I can tell the drive. It strikes me, in the past of the past year, that we keep wanting to put off this. I think it's time for the council to make decisions when they come up. There is absolutely no reason why the EIR cannot be certified at this point in time. To put it off until after the election would just be one more place where there'll be more controversy on this. It's ready to be decided, let's decide it now. We'll wait, the election will come about, the citizens will then have their say on it. Thank you.
Jonathan Teeman, McCormick Lane. Well, now I'm more confused than when I arrived. I did in fact arrive thinking that the EIR was somehow connected with the project, if that's been clarified. So apparently we've spent a large amount of town funds, or maybe library funds, to conduct an environmental, an EIR review that does not in fact certify environmentally the project that is, that some members hoped for in the park. And so now I don't even have the comfort that there's been an adequate environmental review for that. The strongest argument I've heard for going ahead and certifying the EIR is, well, it wouldn't hurt anything because it's a citizen, it doesn't mean anything, which reminds me of contract language I've sometimes encountered where my counterparty says, "Well, you know, this is just boilerplate, it doesn't really mean anything," but they don't seem to want to hear about it when I say, "Well, if it's meaningless, let's just take it out." So I'm more in despair than when I arrived because we haven't, we have an EIR that if certified will undoubtedly ultimately be regarded as serving the purpose for the project. It's not clear to me that it does serve the purpose for the project, but then I'm a layperson, so I've got no expert opinion on that. And it just feels like more of the process that we've seen going on for the past couple of years. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Jim? Jim was coming up. Sorry. You're welcome. I can see the floor.
I just have, I just, Rose Marion Albridge, 90 Lloyding Drive. I just have a comment in regard, I'm sorry I didn't know the man's name, I think he said John, somebody who suggested we not certify it because of the feeling that people who have not been involved will think the decision's been made without them, and it'll just create more rancor. I found it very confusing and asked for help about, why is it we're doing an EIR certification now and yet we have this ballot coming up in November? It's really pretty confusing, even if you've been involved. So I think this point about what the effects would be, not, doesn't have to do with the state or whatever process, has to do with the tenor of the times in Atherton.
Next up is going to be Jim. Just keep your seat. Name is Jim.
Thank you, James Chan, 95 Walter Avenue, Atherton. Let me just mention that my day job, for those who don't know, is as a land use and real estate attorney. I'm not a SEQA specialist, but I dabble in it from time to time. I want to address one issue on the time periods. The city attorney is correct that the 30-day limitation for filing a lawsuit begins with the filing of a notice of determination of approval of the project. And if that's not done, actually, the 180 days doesn't kick in unless and until the council approves the project without a notice of determination or begins the project without approving the project or a notice of determination, then 180 days would start. So 180 days does not start now if you're only approving the EIR. On the other hand, you could approve the project next month and that would start the 30, and file a notice of determination, and that would start the 30-day period. So let's get that clear. Now, as I said, you don't start the 180 days or the 30 unless there's a determination to do the project. And I would like the city attorney to respond after I'm finished to his comment that the project was approved already. I'd like to know how that relates to the issue. And did the 180 days start? If you could just address that. As has been said before, there's no need to rush, the EIR will not become stale. A statement was also made earlier to the effect, if I understood it correctly, that not approving the EIR, not certifying it today, might confuse people who would think that they have 30 days to file a lawsuit, might rush out and file a lawsuit. I think it's the, it seems to me it's the opposite. If you approve it today, then the unformed might think they've got 30 days to file a lawsuit, might rush out into it unnecessarily. So I would suggest you don't approve it now, you wait and certify it if and when it's appropriate after the people vote on it. Finally, in my last 30 seconds, I would like to register a formal objection to having this kind of important meeting at 4 o'clock in the afternoon in the middle of the week. Some of us have jobs, I have my job in the city, 2 o'clock to get down here on time, and it's like 3 o'clock, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
I just have a question on this program EIR versus a project EIR. If the library ends up being built in the park, does this EIR cover that project?
Yes.
Okay. If the library is not built in the park, does it, does the EIR cover that project?
Well, depends on where it's built, but the answer...
Any of the ones that were reviewed, as possible, occasionally.
If it's one of the alternate sites, the answer is yes, but if it's not built at all, if there's no decision, the EIR goes away and it's fine.
Well, we obviously have that. So basically, this program EIR, it's good for any of the projects listed in the EIR and no further environmental investigation will be required.
That's the hope.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Rose? Sorry Denise, Rose got up first. It's kind of a competition here.
First out, Isabella Avenue. Thank you for this opportunity. I think what I have to say is more in the purview of the ship has sailed, but nonetheless, I really want to get some things on the record. You know, I'm still troubled by the issue with the Watkins-Alcamino intersection, it's not been resolved and it doesn't sound like it's going to be, and I don't like the answers that it's out of our hands. You know, I think we really need to get down on that. And as the project manager of LSA said, unless there's some traffic trigger, that's just the way it is. And, you know, maybe this is a traffic trigger. About a month ago, you know, I was invited to Menlo School and College to review their proposal development for Carton Field. I don't know if anybody's familiar with where Carton Field is, it's right on Alcamino, across from Watkins, spanning the length of Alcamino on the west side to Alejandro. They plan to build a new football field, add a new swimming structure, huge tennis courts, two baseball fields. It's going to be a year-round sports field. And what they're going to do is add to their 68 present parking spaces, they're going to have 208 parking spaces. What significance to the EIR is that they're planning to put the driveway right almost kitty corner across from Watkins. Now, you know, so the only way to get to this driveway, now imagine, this is going to serve the college and school, 208 parking spaces, car, driving into this driveway during, all year round, during basketball, not basketball, I'm sorry, swimming, water polo, soccer, lacrosse, football, baseball, all year round, you know, multiple games with the school and college. And the only way to get there, if you're going in the northerly direction, the people from Menlo Park, Palo Alto, which I think the majority of people will be going, will be to make a U-turn, passing Watkins on Isabella. That's the only U-turn there is. And then there will be a few people coming from, say, Redwood City, San Carlos, you know, tying up the traffic going into the driveway on Alcamino. Now, given the traffic that we're projecting for the library, and I don't know if we projected the traffic for the Little League, was that included in the study at all? Because they're saying that they're going to be taking up parking and traffic and it's going to create a problem during peak hours. Now, was that in the EIR set? So all these things, even though the ship has sailed, you know, I think it would be really negligent of the town not to look at all these things. When I was a planning commissioner, when Sacred Heart and Menlo School increased their facilities, we mandated that they do traffic studies. They hired a traffic engineer, and this went on for about a year, neighborhood meetings, and they really addressed the issues until we got to the bottom line answers of what they were going to do to solve the problem. I don't see this here. You know, why are we, why are we passing something that we don't have answers to, whether it's the ship has sailed or not? And I hear that, but you know, I think this is important because I see, and in fact, you know, let me tell you about the history, and in fact, I...
Rose, Rose, please try and wrap it up. You have 10 minutes.
I will. The staff knew about these projects, and I'm concerned that it wasn't in the EIR. This is a dangerous intersection to begin with, the Watkins-Isabella. Two people have died in the last five years. A young girl in Sacred Heart track team, my daughter's track team, was hit, and I believe she sued the town. This is an extremely dangerous intersection. We're going to add 200 cars to it, I think we need to stop and take a look, do a traffic study, correct everything, make sure that everything's okay. You know, I would propose to delay this certification, wait for the votes, and then if it passes, then go do a thorough traffic study. And, thank you.
Let's try and stay with the three-minute limit. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Denise Coverman, 74 Atherton Avenue. One comment to the last speaker. My hope was that if they were aware of that project, that they maybe brought it up at the last hearings that we had. Certainly something to consider and something for Menlo College, I think they'll be doing an EIR on that project. To the point, my understanding of SEQA and the approval of a project is that an environmental impact report is required and a certified report is required before the council makes a definitive decision on a project. Here we are now where the town's making decision to actually have the voters make a decision on the project. And it seems to me that the voters should have all the information that would be required and necessitated that the council would have and need to make a decision on the project. And our decision is a vote, and so my suggestion is that you certify the EIR or not, but certainly go through that process before you ask the voters to make the decision on the project. That makes sense to me, thank you.
Why don't you make your comment after you've read the rest of the...
I just want to say, I think that what the council is going to be asking the voters to vote on is whether or not they want the library in the park and not on the project as it stands or any other location of the project. I think the controversy is whether or not it's at the park.
Valerie, you've already made a comment on this item, so please, you'll have to...
I had some questions, I can make my comment.
That's not appropriate. We're in public comments, we're taking comments.
Okay.
If you'd like to be up here asking questions...
No, I'm making my comment now.
Take out papers and please run for council.
Okay. But not now.
But no questions now, thank you.
No questions, just my comment.
No comments. You've already done public comments on the EIR. You have three minutes. You were up.
I had questions.
Valerie, take out papers, please. Please let other people step forward. We're not going to have people make multiple comments and go back and forth on this.
I didn't make my comments.
Any other public comments before we close public comments?
I have comments.
We'll take closed public comments now and we will go back to...
I may, I may get the same criticism that Valerie did, but I think that there was a, I believe the ERA did say BRI, and the lady from the LSA Associates just said, Ms. Wallace, said that the preference was for a smaller size. And I believe the draft EIR has the preference in the, in the park as an environmental thing, so I just wanted to make a correction, not so much a comment, that there was a comment and there is something in the final EIR, which I think leads towards placement in the park.
I'll tell a procedural timeout here. The council's procedure was pretty clear. Each person gets to speak on an issue one time. Now, it is confusing in the sense that under public comments, and I think I explained, if you can't stay and need to go and want to talk about something on the agenda, you may do so. It has to be on the agenda, and two speakers got up and spoke. And because of that, and it was my understanding, we're speaking about the EIR, if I'm wrong, then you can speak on something else, but because you spoke, it's not fair then because everybody else then would go, "Well, I was confused, I want to get up and speak again." And pretty soon, we sort of throw procedure to the wind. And I think the mayor hit it right, if you've spoken once, you've had your chance, and that's kind of the way the procedure is supposed to work.
DeeDee has ceded her time to me.
Gee, DeeDee's not here.
She asked me to speak.
Nobody can cede time to anybody else under the council's rules.
Well, I do not get to make my comments. Are you going to prevent me from making my comments on this important topic? May I? I asked questions to clarify what had been presented.
But you've already made them.
I did not make my comments.
But you had a chance to make them.
Hi, my name is Gail Alberia, I have seventy-one. I'm confused too. I thought that I heard the representative say that something about the environmental impact, if the library was in the park, would be less than the impact in the other spot here. Am I wrong? Because if that was, was that said? That wasn't said.
You can leave your comments and we'll...
I have a question, that's a question.
Okay, so you may answer the question.
Okay, so the EIR looks at the environmental impacts of the project as it is defined in the project description. The alternatives analysis looks at potential alternatives to the project that might in some way reduce the impacts of the project. We looked at several alternatives, and of all the alternatives that we looked at, the environmentally superior alternative would be a reduced library size in the park. There's no preference for that as a project, it's simply when looking at all of the options that we looked at, it is the environmentally superior alternative because the impacts would be slightly less than the proposed project.
Thank you.
And there is... And there is, there is part of the confusion, I believe. Because the EIR consultant had to have a defined quote project to look at and to evaluate. And so the city council picked a maximum size and a preferred location, and that was what we called the project. Now, there is no project before the city council yet. There has been nothing approved in terms of the final site, size, location, how it's going to look, what it's going to have inside, or anything else, or whether it's going to be built at all. So in terms of a library as a project, it hasn't happened yet, and it's not on today's agenda. And I think that might be driving some confusion about what constitutes quote the project. CEQA looked at a theoretical project, only because, unlike a regular, where a developer comes in, "So I have a site with a finite building I want to put on someplace." That's not what happened here. It was more of a, we have a concept and an idea, and here's where the preferred site is, and a site not to exceed its size. So it's, I think Peter Carpenter was pretty correct. It's almost like a programmatic EIR, where we say, "This is the concept, we want to look at several sites," but it wasn't quite that specific, and it wasn't labeled programmatic. So I think what we have here is, we do have an EIR that looks at, for lack of a better term, a project that is not before the council to decide one way or the other.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none on this item, for people who haven't already spoken, I'll bring it back to the council.
So I have two letters that came to me that requested that they be read into the minutes, specifically on the EIR. One is from DeeDee Fisher, saying that she is very concerned about acting on the EIR for Holbrook Palmer Park. The traffic issues, to me, have not been thoroughly studied and/or mitigated. The suggestion of the traffic light at Middlefield and Watkins would make suggestion as to who is the responsible agency is a concern. Who pays for it? The general fund, the taxpayers? The affected areas and the traffic impacts have largely been ignored. The affected areas are all the streets north of Watkins, and between the Marsh Road intersection, all of Watkins, and the Watkins-Alcamino intersection. Thank you for your consideration, DeeDee Fisher, former mayor and council member. Thank you. So she asked if that be read in the... And then, there's another letter from Ross Kimestein. Mr. Carlson, Ms. Lewis, council members, Town of Atherton. I don't believe I'll be able to attend the town meeting at 4:00 p.m. this Wednesday. I'd like to ensure my comments regarding the library environmental impact report go on the record. I do not see evidence that the Holbrook Palmer alternative, as communicated, has the least detrimental impact and the best value for the residents of the Town of Atherton, since a general town plan with some detailed trade-offs is not in the starting point. In the proposed library EIR, even environmental impacts on displaced functions or substantive treatment of alternatives do not appear to be addressed. Without knowing the impact of the town, general plan alternatives, let alone library alternatives, that costs and benefits, how would one know a good decision was being made? I remain convinced that it would be beneficial to the residents of the town to know what alternatives are for a general town plan. Consequences for the library and resulting costs and benefits. With this knowledge, a rational vote can be made regarding plans for the library, such as asking residents to approve the site for the library, current site, Holbrook Palmer site, or other alternate. I have attached my EIR comments letter, and would like to have it read into the record. I didn't open the PDF to read it. I know it has been submitted, I think it's part of the current EIR, but he has requested that this email be read into the record.
Any other council discussion before we make a motion? Jerry?
Yes. I guess I remain concerned about going ahead with this. I appreciate a good discussion and clarification on things that... I think I have a better understanding of what action if this does go ahead, what it constitutes, what I'm concerned about, though. We've got quite a few residents here today, but the, by and large, the majority of those who would be voting are not present and are not privy to have heard the discussion and will not have as clear an understanding. So I think there's going to be a lot of confusion if we go ahead and certify this today among our voters, as to really what kind of action are we taking? Are we taking, is the council signaling that it's taking this step, going one step closer to approving the library in the park? I think that what I heard today is, no, that's not the, not really the case, but I didn't get that out there to the public. I can't see, envisioning pro and con arguments, spending a lot of time trying to explain that to the rest of the citizens. Voters are not here. So I'm concerned about that, and I'm concerned about the message that we may be sending via the press of going ahead and approving this as being something that is not intended. And it may add fuel to the fire and cause even more controversy. So I appreciate your comments and my comments.
Jim? You know, my comments are very simple. I think we've had lots of public meetings, and we've had lots of opportunities for people to come to meetings where the EIR was discussed. Within the comments, the planning commission has approved, I see no, no value in delaying this. So as far as I'm concerned, I would approve certifying the EIR today. Elizabeth?
So, I really truly believe in transparent government. I believe in the rights of the residents.